Madacek?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
Raykert?
Here.
Sandy?
Here.
Wasfick?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, reading of approval of the minutes from the November 2nd, December 7th, and January 4th meeting. Mr. Raykert?
Move approval.
On all three, Mr. Raykert?
Yes.
Moved by Mr. Raykert, second by Mr. Budke. Do I see any further discussion? If not, call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Meetings are approved as submitted. Public hearings, final approvals, petition and changes.
Item 3-1, Corinna Lem, six reef subdivision located between 4,900, 5,400 blocks of 17th Avenue North.
Mr. Brooks?
Thank you. So, I'll quickly kind of go through this. We did have preliminary approval of this last month, but here's I-29, here's Gateway Drive, here's the truck stop located about here, North 48th Street coming up here. Pete, hopefully you can see my screen. If you just give me a nod, just to make sure you can. 55th's over here, Strata located over here. So, the area we're looking at is here. Here's a sanitary lift. The layout of the plan that you see includes stormwater, pond roughly located in this area, and as I said, the sanitary initial phase of the development's going to be just on the north side of 17th Avenue North. This is a public hearing, and I will stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brooks before we open the hearing? Not seeing any. I'll open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience would like to step up and address item 3-1, please do so at this time. Seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Mr. Raykert?
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Raykert, second by Ms. Sandy. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3-1 passes. 3-2?
Item 3-2, rezoning of 1401 Dyke Avenue from I-1, Lake Industrial to North Dakota Coffee Roastery, micro PUD zoning.
Mr. Brooks?
Okay, I'll try to do as good a job as Sierra did last time on this one. This is for the North Dakota Roastery. It's the former Surefoot Building on 1401 Dyke Avenue. As we presented last time, we're looking at the coffee roastery going here. They have some other uses, fairly large building, but they are looking to do some event center. It triggered us to take a look at zoning, and we did need to put in a little bit different zoning there, looking at B3 uses as well. We thought the best way to do that was through a micro PUD. This is a little bit of unusual area. Right to the north is Housing Authority. We've got, I think the pedal is here. I think the dance studio, dance, et cetera is right over here. So, we have some other things going on there. We think that'll continue. PUDs, just kind of that first laying the footprint there, kind of expanding. We did mail out notices 800 feet around. We actually, it doesn't always happen, right, but we got some calls on this, and they were supportive. And actually, most of them were saying, hey, this smells great in our neighborhood. So, that doesn't always happen, even when...
No, it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
Write that down.
So, it was good. We did not receive any complaints. So, with that, we are recommending approval moving forward.
Any questions for Mr. Brooks before we open the public hearing? I don't see anybody. Open the public hearing. Anybody in the audience like to step up and address 3-2, please do so at this time? Okay. With that, close the public hearing. Mr. Madacek?
Move approval for Light Coffee.
Mr. Raykert?
Second.
Moved by Madacek, second by Mr. Raykert. Any discussion? Seeing no hands. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. 3-3?
Item 3-3, conditional use permit, small animal crematorium in B3 zone at 2612 Gateway Drive.
Mr. Brooks?
This is the last time we'll see this one. It's being pulled by the applicant. They just not ready. They pulled it. We've let them know that they're, to bring it back forward again, they're going to have to resubmit to us, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Mr. Madacek?
Just a quick clarification. That's where the old fat Albert's building was, right? There was an insurance company and stuff in there. It's right next to the car wash on Gateway?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. That was...
That was the building.
That's what they were looking.
Yeah, I know. That's what they're looking. I just want to make sure I had the location right.
Yep.
Were they going to, can you tell me where they're going to use the whole building or part of it?
You know what? That was, one of the problems is we weren't getting all the information from them.
Okay, all right. And that's good. You need it.
I think it was a portion, but yeah, we've let them know that we need a lot more info to move forward, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brooks and Mr. Madacek. Communications and preliminary approvals?
Item 4-1, rezoning of 2,800 South Columbia Road, former Macy's to Day Hud, amendment number two.
Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I may need to be recused on this one.
Okay. Ben's asked to be recused on this. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Mattson, you are recused from this issue. Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
So, I'll quickly go through, although, well, maybe not everybody remembers since it's been so long since Macy's was opened, but South Columbia Road here, here's 32nd Avenue South, Columbia Mall's here, the Southern Anchor, Dayton's, then Macy's for many years. And this is kind of the layout of actually the footprint of what's owned by that, within that property. It includes the building itself, some of the parking area, and they actually, the way they had set this up long ago was part of that road out to, the access drive out to 32nd Avenue, which in, most of these are owned by some way out to the public right of way. That's the way they did things at that time. So, for this property, currently the zoning, it's PUD. The uses that are allowed are B2, Shopping Center District. Most of our commercial districts, most of our residential allows for schools to go in them. So, that's not an unusual thing. In this case, since it's B2, we did not have schools within our B2. It could have easily been in there, since they were in B3s as well, but in this case, they needed to amend this to allow this. Now, when I start to narrow in on the school going in at this location, it is a little unusual, very unusual, right, to have this. But we are seeing this kind of nationwide. How do we redevelop some malls? So, in this case, we do have a purchaser of the, or potential purchaser for the building looking at making it a school. And so, with that in mind, they have submitted just a quick look of what that potentially could look like for them. And we did include this in the staff report as well. So, here's a quick look of it, of what this would look like. So, the Macy's building's up here. Going to get out of this about as quick as I can. So, they are looking at taking out some parking as well, but adding green spaces, which we would anticipate seeing. So, right now that this is parking in this area, but they're going to make a ball field area for there. It's not a full football field size that can fit there, but that's what they're potentially looking at now. And then playground in this area. In terms of the road coming in, they're looking at kind of a drop-off area, so that would attach to the ring road that goes around. Not that dissimilar to the way folks would get up to the Macy's as it sits today, but they are looking at controlling some of those points of entry. So, you're looking at one point of entry here, one here, and then one on the west side of here as well. And then, kind of blocking those off from the remaining parking areas, so that they're a little bit secluded from that perspective. But here's your main drop-off area, which is similar to what we do with a lot of the schools now, safety concerns, those types of things. We haven't got a full look at what the inside is, but I believe that they may be looking at, you know, not going to the next step until they get approval of this, and going a little bit further with purchasing. So, to date, that's kind of what we've received. Happy to try to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Raykert?
So, when, because it's a PUD, we can kind of do whatever we want here, right?
You mean in terms of uses?
No, I mean as far as requirements. And I'm just thinking like, you know, some kind of requirement of a barrier next to that ball, the ball field, so that, I mean, you don't have a ball field of budding a parking lot, or a busy road, or something. I mean, require fencing or trees or screening, or, you know. It looked like there were some fences on the playground. And, but I think that that's something that we should think about writing into the requirements of the PUD, because, you know, in a normal school, they're taking up a whole area, and it's bounded by streets and whatnot that are, but in this case, because it's in the middle of a mall, I think we should think about how...
It's a busy area.
Yeah, how do we say, just make sure we've got something in the PUD that requires some segregation.
Pedestrian and pedestrian from vehicle.
Yeah.
Kids, yeah, kids.
Yeah, because we can't assume that the mall will always have so little traffic as it does...
Right, right. Yeah, or who's going to be, you know...
A little difficult to get hit out there today.
Abutted next to it, you know, whether we, and I don't know what that is, what makes more sense, like a berm maybe, or I...
Yeah, they're definitely pushing the limits, you know. They're trying to maximize use, but, you know, whether it be a, you could do a berm here, but you're not going to get that same separation as, say, a fence or something like that.
Right.
And there is a lot of urban, more urban type schools that, you know, when they're plopped in the middle of a more dense population, that you end up with a lot of this going on, but then definitely separations with fences.
I think it's a wonderful idea. I just want, as long, this is our one chance to kind of get it right, and I'm sure that other people, like you said, other people are doing it, and just kind of be thinking about how we want to...
Yep. Yeah, I get that definitely. We can, we can get a little bit more detail, call out some of those things, and maybe the screening that you're looking for. Like you said, they put that on here today.
Yeah.
And this is just a concept, just so you know. So, I mean, we could actually write that into some of the conditions notes on the PUD that says, we want this. And if there's anything else, certainly we can do that. This is preliminary, but I, you know, if there are some more that you want to have, yes, I see that on the concept, and this is definitely something I want written in. Now's the time to do that.
Right, right. And I would just ask the, you know, I don't know all what I'm thinking. Fences are the first thing I'm thinking of, but, go ahead, Frank.
No, I agree with you on that. The other thing I'm just curious about, will it be blocked off from the rest of the mall?
On the inside?
On the inside, yeah. We don't, we don't know yet that yet, how they're looking to separate that. I don't know, I don't know if they're going to be screened completely from the mall yet at this point.
Okay.
I don't know. There's still another step to this, and I, I don't know where they're at with that, but there is a, what's called an REA out here, real estate agreement, and there is approvals needed by those other tenants, so Shields, yeah. There's the Shields, the Kmart, or, I'm sorry, Kmart Sears, they're owned separately. And then GK owns the JCPenney's, and then the mall property itself as well.
This is a terrible question. I haven't been in the mall for a while, but is there still a food court in there?
Yeah, there's still a food court there.
Okay. But that would be close to this?
Yeah.
And there also is an entrance, well, there's entrance on the other side, too, so...
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and the school I know is going to have some sort of security, but pierced wall, you know, opening.
Right.
I don't know if they're going to have it just flat open, or if there's going to be secure doors and allowing, because, you know, this is a, you know, high school students going into a mall, that's, that's not a bad idea, but where they're going to have elementary and middle school.
I'm more worried about people that shouldn't go in there, going in there.
Schools are always going to be looking at that, but we can get, try to get some detail from you on at least what their preliminary thoughts are. I'm sure it's something they're thinking about.
It's up to them, but I just, you know, I was just curious if it was going to be secure to the mall. Ben, do you know? Mr. Mattson, sir?
Yeah, it's still up in the air. They're, you know, considering actually using the food court, potentially maybe the first couple of years till they would maybe build a kitchen or something. But there's really no advantage to being tied to the mall. Basically, use that as a property line and block it off in general would be the main thought.
I know Ben can't vote on, but Mr. Mattson will use his expertise in dealing with it to ask some questions. Hope you don't mind.
Yeah, and yeah, signing off with the other tenants, I guess, if you will, that was really the main concept in getting this put together. They really wanted to make sure there was still traffic flow on the west side, so that weird little triangle, maybe could have been used as a parking lot or a playground or something, but the other tenants wanted to make sure there's traffic flow through there.
Access through, because they're, this still gets used quite a bit up and through, I think.
That ground round corner's busy over there.
Yeah.
That's a busy one, seems to be. They pull a lot of McDonald's out, the food.
I think the flow, having this one way come out and exit here is probably best. This does, this gets a little bit busy through this area here, but, but yeah, the ground round one does as well. And actually, this whole strip here from Olive Garden over to ground round is, is pretty well used.
Okay. Any other questions? Are we looking at preliminary on this thing? Mr. Raykert?
Move approval.
Mr. Budke?
Just another couple of comments. Overall, I think that the concept is great. I really like this whole concept and idea. And I think, you know, you mentioned the parking. Go figure, I have no concerns about the number of parking stalls here. I did have one comment, though, on the site plan that we're seeing up on the screen, which is with the parking to the south, and you mentioned the ring road, the inlet and outlet, I guess we'll call it, right, to the parking lot?
Oh, here?
Yeah, I mean, it looks like there's just one, right? Like the, sort of the loop is separate from the main parking area.
I'm not positive that this is a full curb and gutter. I guess I'd have to, I'd have to get more detail on that.
Sure.
I would think so.
Okay. Yeah, so I didn't bring it up to like nitpick things, but just, just what I was seeing, the line work here, it looks like that, that single outlet, it just looks like there's a lot of complicated turning.
To get to it.
Right, because you've got people entering, people exiting, going two different directions, and then choosing a direction within the parking lot. So...
And no left turn out of the ground round side, so you're going to be real busy on the other side.
Yeah.
That's already a mess with shields.
So, I don't want to like get in the habit of like nitpicking design things. I just wanted to point out that I think that there might be, there might be a tough spot as it's, as it's depicted now.
Yeah, there might be advantages to splitting this into a, two entrance exits and trying to line those up potentially as well. So, we'll look at that a little bit further.
Okay.
I'll be honest, we haven't gotten to the details of that, because, you know, this, this was kind of meant, as was said, I think was more of a concept, and probably still available for comments, so.
Okay. Yeah, and given that, I still, I think this is great, and I think we should move it forward. So, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Budke. Yeah, I still, you'd like to see some details when it comes back to final, for sure. Okay. Many other discussions? We've got a motion and a second. With that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries...
Item 4-2, rezoning of 2,975 and 3003 Hartland Drive to Hartland West, PUD, amendment number two.
Mr. Brooks, carry it on.
Okay, so here's the Hart, I'm sorry, I'll back out a little bit here. Here's I-29 and 32nd, so we're just to the west of the mall area, just on the west side of the interstate. Here's A Country, here's the Hartland condos. Not everybody sees those, especially if you're in town already, not driving along I-29 along this stretch, but this is, I think, filled up fairly well. These are kind of higher-end industrial condo shops. They're filled with anything from a, I guess what I sometimes hear is man caves, just individual families owning piece of property for storage and/or tinkering of cars, to some businesses being located in there. And when we set this up, that was kind of the intent, and it's really filled up to doing that. So, the request that we have before us is for these two lots down here. They are looking to do the same industrial condos in this area. The zoning's B3 zoning, and we've, we've talked about this in the past, but I'll kind of go through it again. To do the contractor shops, those are allowed in a B3, but only through a conditional use. So, each time somebody came in, they would have to kind of pitch to us what they were going to do. From somebody setting up those condos, that gets really difficult to do to have, you know, try to work out lease agreements, and then send that info into us, and it can be a two-month process, and a lot of times, they were losing the deals that they had set up. And so, the concept's been to put them in PUDs and add that as an allowable use. And in this case, we kind of, we'll look at it, we'll take a look at the parking. And for the most part, parking hasn't been an issue for most condos. They don't end up with a lot of people from the outside stopping in, checking them out, and they really kind of take care of themselves, or have in the, in the past. And so, that's what they're looking to do here. There's also, if you remember right, when we set this one up, this is on the corridor overlay, I-29 here. We excluded that area with that, because it was screened from the I-29. Well, we're looking at doing the same thing here because of the, the existing, I'll zoom in, fence line, or the tree line that's there. And we're really kind of getting into that off-ramp area, where we weren't expecting that originally with corridor overlay. We're really looking at some of those areas that are a little bit more highly visible. This area is very well screened and has been for, for quite a long time. We also gave a break on building setbacks in some of these areas up here. They got a little bit close. They're looking to do one corner up here at the, just under 14 foot setback for the building. As you can see, this got narrow up here. He wanted a certain size building he was looking at, but then as we got down here, he was back at the regular 20-foot rear setback. So, I think that hits all those areas, hit the uses, the corridor overlay being excluded with the tree line, and then that one area with the building setback. Those were kind of those ideal pieces, or the, the points on the, the PUD in this area. Otherwise, it's, it's very similar to what we already had established with the Hartland condos as well, but it's a new owner. He's not going to be quite as prescriptive either with buildings and all having to look the exact same, and kind of that setup that they were doing. They aren't going to be individually owned. So, we don't anticipate seeing, whereas this condo buildings up here were each individually owned, they were going to more of a, I'll, I'll call it like the Marquette setup that he did on Coppergate up on, I think he's got some on Gateway Drive. They're a little bit longer building setup and not this individual setup, so.
So, there'll be rentals, basically?
Leased, yep, yep. If somebody's going to go to a larger portion, he could potentially do a condo, and that's what, they would all be shared. They wouldn't have their individual property lines in there like this one was set up.
Okay.
So, you'd have to go to a, a little bit different condo association, where everybody's owning, owning everything in common.
Mr. Raykert?
So, you referenced, is there a layout for, have they submitted a site plan?
They have. I do, do we put that in the, we do have a preliminary that we are working with them on. Do we have that by chance?
I'm not that. I mean, I'm going to move to approve, but if we could just have it in the packet for final?
We will. We'll include that. Oh, there it is. I might have it.
I mean, your description's great, but sometimes a picture is easier.
I don't. We'll get that for you for final.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Raykert?
Second.
Who are you going to give it to, Danny?
Sandy.
Ms. Sandy. Okay. I heard them at the same time. Okay. Any further discussion? I just like to see, make it, those ones are pretty nice looking out there. Just like to make sure that, since it's right on the interstate, that kind of carries through, and if they become leases and rents, and kind of gets out of hand sometimes. So, as long as we state that in record a little bit, we'll go. Further discussion, Mr. Budke?
Yeah, just a question, because I see there's like this, in the packet anyway, there's this amendment one standards, right? It looks like the condo agreement. Is the...
That was, that was for the northern piece.
Okay.
Yep.
So, that's just sort of included for reference. It's not necessarily in effect?
Yeah, that's the existing for the amendment one. That, those are the condos that they, the condo pieces that they had on this piece up here. I don't believe that they had that for a full, that was part of amendment one.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, and that's, that's this one up here, which is north is to the, to the left.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. 4-2 passes unanimously.
Just a reminder, we'll be doing mailing notices as well. So, next time, we'll have that 800 feet notified on that next phase.
Okay. Other reports from the planning department?
Yeah, we do have the pet discussion. We'll have that next Thursday, the 9th, and we're meeting down on Griggs at what time again? 2:00. 2 o'clock, so, 2 o'clock next Thursday. And, what's that? Oh, sorry, 5-1 Annual Report. That is available and linked, so.
Thank you, Andrea.
Yes. And she did it, most of it, so.
We know.
Nearly all of it, probably all of it. And if it looks good, I did it all. I didn't.
Perfect.
I didn't. The last is the, so next, this space is being redeveloped. We, is a potential that was going to be, our next meeting may have been perhaps in the next space. I don't think that's going to happen. I don't think things are going to happen that quick. I'm near positive it won't, but just to keep you kind of aware that that is being looked at. Probably by our April 1, we'll have it, I think, preliminary. Right now, we're talking in the community room over in the Herald, which is now complete. So, by April, we're looking at more than likely that meeting being over there, and we're looking at how that's going to be accommodated. Usually, our meetings aren't, there aren't as many people, but we're still trying to do the camera setup and how all that's still going to be maintained. We've got a certain, a lot, a lot of things juggling. It's not as easy as just setting up in a different space and announcing where that location is. There's a lot more on the IT side and video and those types of things. But just to be aware, and we'll be letting you know well in advance of when that'll be and when that move will occur, so.
What's our, what's the, the notice requirement? How long ahead of time do we have to say the location?
So, we...
For the public meeting?
That's, next week already is probably our, our public hearing requirements for the Herald.
Okay.
And so, I don't think we're going to be able to pull that trigger that quick. But that's, yeah, with the Herald, the Herald requirements now are essentially three weeks in advance of the meeting. We need to let everybody know and put it in the paper, so.
Okay.
That's to get, three weeks in advance to get it in the paper, two weeks in advance for our required 10-day notice, so.
Okay. Any, any other business from the commission? Mr. Madacek?
Yeah, thank you. I'm sure we all know that the Foo-Fung thing has kind of died out. The wishes of this commission some time ago, when the annexation was started, was that if Foo-Fung wasn't developed, that we didn't support the annexation of that area. Whether that's still the case or not, I don't know. But just for everybody's information, the wheels are starting to turn on a de-annexation process legally of that area. So, there'll be more to come, I guess, as they say.
Okay.
I just thought I'd make everybody aware of that. A lot of people are, were happy with our motion some time ago about not annexing if Foo-Fung didn't come. However, city council overrides us, and that's fine. But just want everybody to know, there's a start to that process.
Okay, sounds good.
Did we get any traction on my request, our request from asking about us being back involved with annexations?
I think our default is still going to come and still have, they'll still be on the agendas. I have not talked to them. We haven't put an ordinance forward as of yet to make that a permanent piece. So, we haven't, we haven't touched that yet as an ordinance to put that into place. ordinance to put that into place. And right now, we still plan on bringing those forward to you and, but I haven't looked at them.
Let me know when I need to go up there and sell it.
All right.
I have one other thing. Mr. Maticek, please? Are, are you aware of the possible state legislation about updating the zoning and the stuff that's going on and a couple of those bills that are in front of the legislature in Bismarck?
Uh, which ones? There's a few.
Well, the primary one is the zoning one that would be tied to the corporate farming thing, where it would actually supersede zoning in certain areas to allow these agricultural 160 acres units to not have to worry about what the zoning was or who the people were or whatever were around them. And I think there's some serious consequences there with losing, as much as I don't always agree with the legal control here for certain things, but losing the legal control, or the local control, I mean, I'm sorry, the local control of, of the people being able to control what the zoning is in their area. So I, I'm not sure where that one's going. I haven't completely read it. The people that have talked to me about it, it's, it's not really very good for a lot of communities. It kind of supersedes everything. And whether, whether it'll pass or not, I don't know, but I, I'm sure, is Mr. Burnson the one that goes out to the legislature and?
Uh, well, not, oh, there's a, there's a few of us depending on, on what is coming.
Would it be possible for you to, if you know more about it, or you're gonna go testify at this or whatever, to possibly send us some emails so we could be, kind of have an idea what's going on?
Yeah, we can, we can forward, there, there's a few bills that we are tracking.
Yeah, there's three or four that are kind of, kind of funny, okay? Yeah.
And I mean, just so everybody knows, the, the bills right now, we have the House and Senate, and there's bills on each side, and then March 2nd.
Crossover, yeah.
Yeah, they have crossover, and then the ones that are, continue to survive, then they.
Well, if they don't get out of committee, they're done.
That's right.
You know, usually. So, yeah.
I think the last count that I know the city was tracking, it was over 300. I don't think John's there tonight. I think it's Cheryl, but John probably can rattle that off fairly quick. But we can certainly let you know before we, I have testified in the past. It's been, I think, just one time, a couple of years ago that I did, but, but yeah, we can let you know of all the bills that are being tracked and I'll let you guys figure out and send you the links.
Yeah, I testified on Friday. I testified on Friday against the corporate farming bill, and it was pretty close to 300 people, I think, in that room. So those issues are, there's a lot of, lot of interest. And I'm sure the zoning one will be because it's working with the league of cities, the townships, and the counties, if I understand that bill properly. So, or those are the groups that are gonna try to either defeat this or approve it. I don't know what they're gonna do, but.
Yeah, there's always the ability to, to submit testimony ahead of time and then that gets logged. So if anybody has an interest, the cities, the what, those we're tracking, they do go on our city website. You can, you can look those up and then you can always go to the state legislature and, and track any of the bills and they provide quite a bit of info on, on where they're at.
Yeah, one of the problems is though, the bills are there and you, you know what's said, and then somebody will come up with an amendment out of nowhere, and the next thing you know, that's, that's done. So.
Occasionally they get hogged after that second crossover.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. Well, thank you.
The bills are completely different, yeah.
Okay. Any other business? Not?
Move adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
So move.
Thanks, Keith.
Meeting adjourned.